Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Tauch?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Mr. Griffith? I'm going to put up his ass until unless he comes on late and then Mr. Perry.
Here.
10 of 11, President.
Thank you, Sharon. Great to hear Tim on his voice and he's certainly moving in the right direction. We welcome him semi-back and it's just it's good to hear from him. He is going to be on for the voting session. He is not quite up to running the meeting, so I will take his place going forward. Recognizations and ceremonial proclamations, proclamations, Jackson Dempsey. Mr. Schnee is going to read this proclamation. Mr. Schnee, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say how proud I am of Jackson and his heroic actions that he took. And I'll read the proclamation and then I'll have a few items to say afterwards. But whereas the Luzerne County Council would like to acknowledge Jackson Dempsey as an eight-year-old for his heroic heroic actions toward his 20-month-old baby sister, Leila Dempsey. Whereas Jackson Dempsey, son of Matt Dempsey and Kristen Dorso of Hazelton, Pennsylvania, is an eight-year-old boy in second grade at the Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School, Hazelton, Pennsylvania. Whereas while his father was driving, Jackson was in the backseat of the vehicle with his sister, Leila. When Jackson realized his 20-month-old sister, Leila, was choking on a chicken nugget, he did not panic. Instead, he directed his father to pull the car over and proceeded to dislodge the obstruction from his sister, Leila's airway. And whereas Jackson Dempsey's quick thinking and prompt immediate action saved his sister's life and has set an example for all to follow. Now therefore, we the Luzerne County Council do hereby honor, applaud, and congratulate Jackson Dempsey. His heroic efforts are commendable and serve as a testament to the value which we place on human life and to the unselfish actions which enrich our community. Through the news, we hear negative stuff all the time. And here's an eight-year-old kid that stepped up and a hero to everybody down here in the south, southern end especially, but throughout Pennsylvania. And I'd just like to thank him and say how proud everybody is of him. I've had the privilege of working with his grandmother, Betsy Dorso, on the Hazelton area school board. I mean, she was always a good lady and whatever she voted, she voted from the heart. I refereed with her his grandfather, Anthony Dorso, high school basketball. And I know the grandfather for many years. So he was brought up with the right values. His mother and his grandparents both on the Dempsey side and the Dorso side. And again, just how proud we are of Jackson's actions. I know the mayor of Hazelton called the surrounding fire companies a week or two ago and they all came out. So Jackson had a nice party that was well-deserved. And thank all the firemen for participating in Jackson's party for him. And again, we're very proud of you, Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Schnee. I happen to know the family myself quite well. They're good people and they raise their son well. Thank you, Jackson. Next proclamation. 911 National Safety Telecommunications Week proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and the accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who telephone the Luzerne County Communication Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency surferences. And whereas the public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas each telecommunicator communicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job. And now therefore, we Luzerne County Council do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th, 2021, to be the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Luzerne County in honor of these men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Next, we call the retirements. Rhonda Adams, Administrative Assistant Area Agency of Aging. Jonathan Blum, Assistant Public Defender, Public Defender's Office. James F. Emily, Correction Officer Two, Minimal Offenders Unit. Mary A. Rebeck, Clerical Supervisor, Children and Youth. Monica Green, Case Worker, Children and Youth Services. Pamela Corneary, Clerk Two, Purchasing. Kevin Kane, Director of Domestic Relations. Linda Visco, Clerk Typist Three, Children and Youth Services. Diane Lardone, Case Worker, Children and Youth Services. Lauren Pollak, Correction Officer. Eileen Scarlett Pacers, Pacers Coordinator, Domestic Relations. We thank all of you for your service to our county and we hope that your retirement is long and very healthy and all you receiving letters to justify that.
Mr. Perry, it's Walter. I just want to let you know that I'm online.
Thank you, Walter. Attorney DeLuca, would you discuss a little bit about our executive session?
Counsel, mat and executive session for legal matters. No deliberations took place and no decision was made. It was on matters of Omalecki versus Luzerne County and Wachilla versus Griffith and Luzerne County. And it was held 5:00 PM until approximately 5:25 PM via Teams.
Thank you, Attorney DeLuca. Additions to deletions from the voting agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I would like to remove item number three from the agenda, please.
Do we have a second to that?
Second, Urban.
You have a second? I'd like to have a roll call vote on that.
I thought I was on mute. Hey, Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Tauch?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Eight, no, three, yes.
Thanks, Sharon. Any other additions to or deletions from?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Do you have a second for that? Second, Linda. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard?
No.
Mr. Griffith? Motion carries. The agenda is adopted. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement that majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting.
So moved, Linda.
Linda, second?
Sheila.
Ms. Sedman? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Motion. Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Second. Mr. McGinley? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition?
Yes, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Chair, open up public comment on the voting agenda items only.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Rebo speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Rebo. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to add from the comprehensive plan hearing, also on page 50, because of the developments I'm sure you're aware of with the council voting to approve Hazelton Creek Project and now for the LERTA and also for the upcoming one that you're going to discuss in the work session, I don't know why it wasn't included in the comprehensive plan, nor was the fact in terms of housing that's needed because it says that Cranberry Creek should be where the housing, you know, is considered to be developed. But I don't think there's any environmental impact study done to allow for the development of housing in that area because there's abandoned mine lands there. I mean, if you're going to develop housing in that area, I think you might want to do an environmental study first before any housing development goes there because what happens if the foundation falls into the abandoned mine shafts? I mean, that's something to consider, I would say. So that should be, you know, that should be looked at. That's why I said in the in the public hearing on comprehensive plan, the details do matter. Also, with respect to agenda item number three, the Market Street Square with the train station and Whitehaven, I think that something should be, it should be considered, Whitehaven should be considered if it's because the building is already finished. With the train station, it hasn't been finished. It's not even started. So if, you know, those things need to be taken into consideration instead of basing a vote on political expediency from a campaign donor to a state legislator. That's and that's for number three. And number five, motion to adopt resolution to reduce the 10% penalty fee. I think the council needs to take into consideration that the pandemic is not over yet and that the economy, while it's it's slowly but surely getting back online, I think we need and also the moratorium has not been lifted yet. This should be considered. This should be done. And next year for 2022, when the economy fully gets back on track, then we could resume the usual, you know, the usual course of action. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rebo. Anybody else? Public comment on agenda items?
Mr. Manta.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Manta.
Okay, like Mr. Rebo said, I don't want to be copycat, but I want to echo his, I want to echo his sentiment about the Cranberry Creek area and Hazelton. I'm familiar with the area because I drove in that area quite a bit. That area is so prone to mine subsidence. Believe me, if they don't do a study on that, I mean, the the jetto mines and all the mines in that area are undermining that whole Cranberry Creek development. And they need to do a study on that. And as far as the Market Street Square goes, to tell somebody, we're not going to do, we're going to, we want you to lock in a certain amount of money from the county before they proceed with a job, I think that is ludicrous. I believe the people that are doing that deal, I mean, you know, that's like communism already, like a sickle and a hammer. Come on, like, this is the United States of America. And as far as the 10% penalty for taxes, I believe that should be lowered to 2%. Because of the fact that until this economy gets rolling again, and again, I'm going to bring up the same thing, how many people voted to help the Luzerne County residents with the rain tax? How many people voted against that? All right? Was it you, Mr. Perry, Mr. Vog, Ms. Sedman? They all voted against helping the people with that 10% rebate. Now, this is going to be in election time, so all you people could look at yourself in the mirror and say, did I help the people in Luzerne County or did I let them down? And I think the answer, after you look yourself in the mirror, you're going to say, you let the people down. So this is really hurtful to me to see that they're going to continue with this 10%. You know, like, oh, it's only a couple penny. Oh, it's only, all those couple of pennies add up for people that are just about making it on the money that they have. And you all should be ashamed of yourselves. And that's, I'm going to stop there before my blood pressure goes up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manta. Anybody else? Agenda items only. Anybody else in the public? Any more public comment?
Oh, Chris, go.
Okay. Next, agenda items. Clerk of Council, motion to approve the minutes of March 25th, March 23rd, 2001 voting session.
So moved, move on.
Second vote.
Who's that?
Second vote.
Mr. Vog?
Got it.
All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposition? None heard, motion carries. Old business, anybody have any old business?
Mr. Perry, I was going to know on the minutes.
Sorry.
Yeah, so is Walter.
Did you get that, Sharon?
Got it.
Thank you. Anything on old business?
Mr. Perry, if I could real quick, under old business? And I don't know if this would even, I have a little bit of a concern. I'm looking at the resolutions and ordinances that are posted online and the ordinance that ordinances that fail, we don't put the vote on the ordinance that fail. Is there, can, do we have to have a motion to have that recorded on the ordinances that fail? Because when you go out there to look at the webpage and you look at 2021 ordinances that pass and ordinances fail, I would, I would certainly think that the ordinances that fail should have the recorded vote there. So if we could make that a matter of policy to put that on the ordinances that fail as well, that would be helpful for folks that want to look back at ordinances that did pass. We know the vote on that, we should know the vote for them failing as well. So if counsel can consider that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else?
And also thank you to Sharon for putting the proclamations online. Thank you very much for that. I think that's very helpful for the people. Thank you. I know that's extra work for her, but thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Attorney Kokomo, could you comment on the ordinance that failed? Mr. Griffin had mentioned that, old business.
Well, there's no legal prohibition that I know of that would prevent the posting of the resolutions of the ordinances that fail. It just seems to me that that has been the ordinary custom that we only post the ones that that pass. I'm sure they can set up a menu that says ordinances that failed, but that would be IT and Sharon would have to do that.
Thank you. And I, you know, quite honestly, we can go back and look at the minutes to see how the whole was. I mean, I'm not saying that it's being hidden in any way. I just think it would be more transparent if we just put that vote out there. Some of those ordinances are pretty, pretty controversial and pretty important ordinances that it would be interesting to see readily how council members voted on those ordinances. So I think that would be helpful in the interest of transparency. The other item that the last item that I have under old business is the codification. I know I've brought it up many, many times. I'd like to know what the status is on that. Do we have to file a mandamus to make that happen? Because that is a violation of the charter. So are we proceeding with the codification or are we not?
I don't have an answer for that. Maybe Mr. Attorney Kokomo does?
We should post an RFP, but I know we did get pricing from the company that has previously published our codification. So I will, I will make sure that the RFP gets posted within a week from today and we'll get the responses to you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Kokomo. Agenda items, number one. Motion to adopt a resolution adopting a 2021 Lackawanna, Luzerne County's comprehensive plan. A, 2021 Lackawanna, Luzerne County's comprehensive plan, the original draft. B, the index of the edits. C, 2021 Lackawanna, Luzerne County's comprehensive plan, edits redefined. And D, 2021 Lackawanna, Luzerne County's comprehensive plan, the final draft. Could I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve item 1D, that we would accept the comprehensive plan with the with the edits that the staff and consultants put together for us.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. We need a second.
Second, Lee Ann.
Secondly, Ann. Thank you. On the question?
On the question, Mr. Perry?
Yes.
I like those two concerns that Mr. Rebo brought up, added to that document. That was concerning, the water that's being from Rockport that's drawn out of the Lehigh Valley and the COVID-19 item. If they could be added to the document.
And I'll second that motion too, Mr. Chair, for that amendment. Okay. Attorney Kokomo, are we able to do that?
I would have to defer to Matt, but obviously amendments are allowed to the document, to the comprehensive plan. But to speak whether those two issues are appropriate in this comprehensive plan, I would have to ask Matt Jones to speak to that.
Mr. Jones?
Good evening, counsel. The adoption of this plan is a mechanism of counsel as the legislative body and the governing body. You can adopt it by majority vote. You could adopt it in the order of 1D as Mr. Haas has recommended. That would be with all four of the previously suggested edits included and incorporated as final language. You can also amend your motion to include the additional comments that Mr. Schnee is supporting that came from Mr. Rebo regarding those two items, if you wish. State law enables you to make these minor edits, if you wish. It would have, it would have to be by majority vote as expedited by the chair of council to consider the various edits and what your final adoption of the ordinance would be. I would recommend that if you are adding two new comments made by Mr. Rebo and supported by Mr. Schnee, that I have some exact language spelled out for me so that the clerk of council and the planning director can take those comments and make sure that they are exactly what you're voting for as a majority of council so that I can include them in the final document.
Okay, thank you.
I think if I could, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Here.
Yeah, I think Mr. Jones spoke last week that this can be amended at any time and perhaps something more appropriate would be to pass the the final version tonight, the 1D. Have have Mr. Jones and his staff take a look at and discuss with Mr. Rebo and the will of the majority of council to get that precise language and then add the amendments next voting session. Because I think time is of the essence of this. I believe there is a timeframe that we're under here and we want to make sure we get it right. We're not, we're not willy-nilly here, loosey-goosey. So if, I think that might be a good approach, but again, I'm just one councilman here for the will of the council.
Thanks, Chair. I think that's a great idea. Let's, let's, let's pass, let's vote on the the motion, Mr. Haas's motion inclusive into one and 1D.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
I have just one, when I was reading it over, it's a small edit, but on page, I think it's 19 of 76 or it's the part where it says five pillars, planning process. And just the last part, January 20th to April 2021, it talks about residence, municipal, county, staff, and commissioners. I think there should be a statement about council. Instead of, I mean, commissioner and/or council. I mean, I think Lackawanna County, but we're Luzerne and it's a plan for both of us.
Okay, okay, Mr. Jones, you can look at that also and we can, we can.
I make a motion that wherever commissioners our word is found, it's commissioners slash council members.
Second.
Did you get that, Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Who is the second? Sheila?
Yes.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the table for the two from Mr. Rebo, supported by Mr. Griffiths. We either need to table that or
Vote it down or
withdraw your motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, as an order of procedure, I would advise the council based on my understanding of Pennsylvania Act 247. I appreciate Mr. Haas's open, out-of-the-box idea of trying to maybe adopt 1D now and then entertain additional amendments later. My understanding of the state law is that we need to have all the amendments in front of us. And when the governing body adopts the plan by majority vote, that that's it. Like, I can't reopen this. Otherwise, there would be additional public announcements that would be involved. It would be, it kind of opened a can of worms logistically for meeting state law requirements. I'm not sure it's a road we want to go down on or that we can afford as a county government. We've invested a lot of money into the consultant and the staff work that goes into this. It would become a logistical challenge to go about it that way. And as much as it might be painful to get these comments in the open now, I think that's the best route to go for logistical purposes to make sure we get this included if that's what the majority of council wishes. State law says that minor edits can be made until the point that the adoption occurs by resolution. That motion to adopt by resolution is voted on. State law says that it's a specific majority vote of the governing body. And then that's it. It's done. And so our, our part as, as one of two counties in adopting the plan would then be done. And Lackawanna has its process. And any, any minor edits that are made at this stage, they are attributed to the one of two counties that wishes to see them made.
Should I, I can, I can withdraw my second then on that and then we can have amendments made.
The second was for the plan with edits. The one that's on the table is to amend with the, is it water and the COVID-19?
Correct.
So what we need are specific languages for both of those amendments before, I guess, we take a vote? Is that correct?
Is that, is that what you're saying, Matt?
That's what I'm suggesting is the best way to do this under state law. It would be clean. It would be legal. Once, once you've adopted it, we can't go back, really.
Mr. Chair, it's vetoed. How, how do we get around going back to the public now with these additional amendments that Mr. Raible brought up at the public hearing? I mean, I don't know, however we do it, how, how we get around going through and having another public hearing? You know, when we get to this point after the public hearing, where the public has had an opportunity to speak on the plan, if you're going to change it now, how do we not go back in front of the public?
It's not a new item. It's, we can amend anything up to the time of adoption. We amend ordinances right before we adopt them and we don't, you, I mean, that was the point of the public hearing, was to receive public comment on it. Anyone could have spoken on the, on those and they did. And that's the, that's how we got the amendments. I don't believe you need to go back to another public hearing on it.
It depends on whether or not the change is substantive. But when we advertised originally for that public hearing, members of the public saw what we had originally advertised as the comprehensive plan. They decided to participate in the hearing based on what they read. Now to have council change it without having, and if it's substantive, I don't know. Matt may be able to speak more to whether or not it's substantive. Certainly, I'm not, not able to give an opinion as to whether or not these suggested amendments are substantive or not. But if they are, presumably, the public should have an opportunity to speak on it. This is the issue with, at the time of the actual vote, making changes that could be considered substantive. If they are, then, then that's something that the public should have a right to speak about.
Would it work?
Matt, what is your opinion as to whether or not these are substantive changes? Or, or whether, you know, obviously, what Ms. Siedman said about changing, and, and Mr. McGinley said about changing all instances where it refers to commissioners to county council members or commissioners. That's something that, that I don't even think arguably would be considered to be substantive. But is this something that could be argued is substantive?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't think someone would have a case to challenge a council's adoption of the plan with minor edits having been considered at this public hearing. And I can read the clause in state law I think would be helpful. It's section 302B of Pennsylvania Act 247. It says this, "The governing body shall hold at least one public hearing pursuant to public notice." We have that public notice made in the newspaper. If the proposed plan is substantially revised, the governing body would have to hold another public hearing pursuant to public notice before proceeding to vote on the plan or amendment there too. So the key word is substantially. And I don't think that these minor edits rise to the level of being so substantial that we would have to reopen that can of worms. I think that we have the public invited to all of the opportunities to provide input on this plan over the last several months. They have been privy to the work session that was held three weeks ago.
No, wait, but I, and I don't mean to interrupt, but the definition of substantial change is not reflected on whether or not we dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's up to this point. All of that other stuff, absolutely, you followed every single procedure to the letter to get us to this point. I'm not in, in a position, sitting here at a, at a council meeting at 6:30, not being aware that this would be something that was proposed. I'm not in a position to give a legal opinion at this moment as to whether or not the changes that were proposed are substantial or not. I mean, if council is willing to, I don't believe Attorney Crocamo is either. And this is one of the issues with, when there are proposals to change something that has really, so much work has gone into, we don't have, we're, we're not all-knowing. So I have no opinion at this moment as to whether or not this is the type of change that would require another public hearing. And I don't know, Ramilda, whether or not you're comfortable giving an opinion as to whether or not this is substantive or not. County council could, could decide whether or not. Matt, and, and obviously, you've been involved with this right from the beginning, but you're not an attorney, understandably. You're not. But I have no opinion on, on this at this moment, and I don't know if Ramilda does.
That's why I, I use the term appropriate when I deferred it to Matt, whether these are appropriate amendments to the plan. You know, the proper term would have been substantive. You know, Matt, that's a legitimate question, I think, that we have. I mean, is the housing issue because of COVID based on, I, I have no facts in front of me that there were individuals from New York or New Jersey coming to the lower part of the county because of COVID? Is that an appropriate amendment in this plan without having any foundation?
Well, that's a judgment call that council would have to make as, by a majority vote. I think that you have, I think the council has, is within their right by majority vote to make whatever edits they wish to this document before they pass it. And they could do that this evening. And as long as it's not substantial, and that would, to me, that, that is an overhaul of the whole document. I mean, that doesn't rise to me as a substantial change.
This is Leanne McDermott. Where do you think that change would go in? Because I'm just looking through the document to see what, where would that go? What page would that go on? Maybe that can help us delineate whether it's going to be substantive, you know, substantive.
And what is the actual language of the, of the change? Like, what, what is that absolutely, like, very specific language that, that is being proposed? We run the risk of putting something in that plan that, that could end up causing us, us problems down the road.
Could I, could I just ask that we take a vote on whether we want to amend the plan? And then if, if there is a desire to amend it, then we can talk about specific language?
I would just like to know what key that could possibly go on?
We need the specific language for the vote on?
One second, Sharon. Hold one second. Let's, let's get this, see if we can get this all wrapped up a little bit better. I personally don't feel comfortable now after hearing Attorney DeLuca and Attorney Crocamo made their statements. And I, we don't have, number one, the, the exact language that we need. Is it one sentence for water? Is it five sentences about water? Is it 10 sentences about COVID? Is it a paragraph? The question I have is, Matt, can we, do we have enough time, time sensitivity, to table this now and move it to the next voting session? And then we'll have everything in front of us. We'll have the exact language we want. And we don't have any problems then with the, with, with the law? Is that, is that possible? Can we do that? Do we have one more meeting, two weeks?
Yes. If the majority of council wishes to accommodate these suggestions from Mr. Schnee, from Mr. Raible, you can allow staff to work with those parties. They can propose language to us. We can work with the consultant to come up with language that would then be inserted in the plan as another red line edit that you all could consider as, as part of the final document, if that's what you want to do tonight.
What's the deadline? What is the deadline? That's the question.
We're anxious to button this up with our consultant. We have limited resources, but we could go another two weeks if that becomes necessary, another two or three weeks. Lackawanna is in a similar situation. It's, it's drug out a little bit longer than they had anticipated. We're looking at probably doing a change order to the task order contract with the consultant to make sure that we have them still available to help us expedite this work. And the other, the other pinch point is that, you know, we have a comprehensive plan that's supporting Luzerne County right now that will eventually become 10 years old. And if that becomes longer than 10 years old, it's no longer valid. So we want to make sure that we.
Do we have two weeks?
Yes.
Yes. I make a motion to table this.
Second.
Next voting session.
I second it. Linda.
Oh, should we make the motion to postpone, not a motion to table?
No, we'll just bring it back off the table.
Yep.
Okay. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Siedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Then yes, one no. Table.
May I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Matt, when, I don't know, you prob, at the Lackawanna meetings, I mean, Mark brought up an issue regarding water use, I believe. And I can't see how it's not substantial when you have a section on land use and you have, you know, we haven't discussed the water issue. But I was wondering, did Lackawanna County come up with any of these things that we should be sharing in terms of ideas? Like, did they bring up a COVID issue? Did they bring up a, you know, water? Did they bring up the housing issue that Mark brought up? I mean, I just would like to know, if this is a joint consolidated plan, should not we be sharing some of these ideas?
So what we did, Councilmember Siedman, is we, we ran newspaper ads. We ran press releases. We did postings on the department website. We did active solicitation of area groups and the citizens at large. We shared by word of mouth and by email. We got 600 survey responses. This was run by two county staffs and a, and a consultant. We did focus group meetings with local natural resource group leaders. We had a focus group on, on the subject of housing in particular. Out of that came themes of discussion on blight. So, you know, we put a lot of thought into this. I'm going to ask Brian Punkhauser and Hannah Clark from the consultant team to speak to how much we may have discussed, may or may not have discussed some of these particular items that Mr. Raible's raised in terms of the pandemic and how that's affected the region. You know, moving forward, any edits that council might want to make to this document would then be attributed to Luzerne County Council. You know, Luzerne County Council feels such and such, X, Y, Z. Because we're sort of dueling banjos at this stage. The, the two counties together drafted the document as we have it in front of us. And now, moving forward, each body is going through its own adoption process. And any final minor edits that are made, they can be made to be attributed to one, whichever one of the two counties governing bodies felt that they wanted to add that additional language.
Well, that's assuming they're minor. And if they're, if we're adding and changing language significantly or sections, then, I don't know. It doesn't seem like it's a comprehensive plan for Luzerne and Lackawanna County together. It's a consolidated plan. It doesn't seem like that unless they're agreed upon, the language is agreed upon by both counties.
I think that, if I may, I think that there is a base that the both counties agree on. And when the plan is brought before the respective governing bodies, they may want to make changes that reflect the situation.
Okay, I, I see. So if Lackawanna has no concern about the southern end of Luzerne County, then they don't have any need to add those addendums up. Okay.
Okay, Sheila. Okay, Matt, so Matt, you have, you have, you have what we're going to do. You're going to get together with Mr. Schnee and make any of those particular changes that he needs. And we'll, we'll get this back on the voting agenda next meeting. Okay?
If I may, we, we probably should plan to have another public hearing. You know, we don't, I can't, we can't affirm that these aren't substantive changes. But I think to err on the side of caution, especially with the fact that we're talking about water use and it wasn't reflected in the original plan, we probably, we, we should have a, another public hearing on the new plan.
Absolutely.
Ramilda, I, I agree. It's absolutely essential, based on state law, that we'll have to have it as a new public hearing. And we will announce those in advertisements in the newspaper.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll work with you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Matt.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say hats off to Mr. Jones and the staff and the consultants and all the folks that came together for this. But I mean, you know, if you look at the water resource, it's page 78. It's a pretty straightforward document, really well crafted. It says water resources. And, you know, the Chesapeake Bay watershed is the dominant place where most of our water flows to. But we do have areas flowing to the Delaware Bay. And that needs to change at the top up there. And I guess that is substantive if you're talking about two different watersheds. So I agree with the majority on that one. But I think the changes, just like the, the edits that were made from the first draft, I think they're, they're not, they're really not that cumbersome. They're, they're pretty easy. Hence my vote about not, not having to go through the process all over again. But I totally see, we want to be safe and sorry. And our real concern is, hey, we have a concern about drawing down water out of the Lehigh River. We think that is going to put some of our communities in jeopardy. I mean, really, it's, it's a sentence or two, as far as I see it. But I'm just the elected person. I'm with the contractual staff. So thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Haas.
Hey, Perry, I just have a quick legal question on this, too.
Go ahead.
Knowing that, knowing that this is a comprehensive plan between Luzerne and Lackawanna Counties, I mean, if we make changes, don't they have to approve them as well? I mean, and if they make changes, we would have to approve them in order to have a consolidated plan that's consistent across the board. You know, I mean, this is one of these issues where if you have both council and commissioners of Lackawanna County having to vote on a plan, it probably would have behooved staff to bring us together a long time ago to sit down in a room and hash all of these details out. You know, not to have this once again gun to the mid, gun to our head mentality to push this plan forward because this has gone on and transpired for so long. You know, and this is where, you know, legal staff and, and us who were tasked to vote on this should have gotten involved a lot sooner. Except, you know, here we are, once again, it's the 25th. I was trying to sort all this legal jargon out. And because it is comprehensive, like I said, you know, we're going to take a vote on our changes, but Lackawanna would have to take a vote on our changes to make them part of the overall plan. And we would have to take a vote on their changes to make it one in the same document.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I disagree with that. I, I disagree with you, Steve, because, I mean, look, we, the staff did their job. They followed through. We were the last stop. It was, it was very appropriate. I think they, I think they did a great job. And if you look here, we, we just had this, a citizen brought forth an issue. We addressed it. You know, there's still time. It's just appropriate. If this were to brought up two weeks ago, we would have incorporated in the amendments. I don't think there's any foul play or whatsoever. And I, I just think, if you look at the amendments that were made, it was expressed that Luzerne County Council, the council majority, which it maybe, might be unanimous, stated. It doesn't state Lackawanna County. And I think that's wholly appropriate because these are issues that we're concerned with and maybe they're not concerned with. are issues that we're concerned with, and maybe they're not concerned with north of the border here. So, um, again, hats off, Mr. Jones.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Haas. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Urban. Let's go number two.
Mr. Perry, one last item, if I could, please. I'm sorry. I would just request Mr. Schnee, uh, to send to the planning department the language that, the exact language that's suggested by, um, Mr. Raybo, if they could work together to supply that to us. I mean, I, I'll have an audio recording of this meeting, but, um, you know, trying to have something in writing that we could, um, look at would be helpful. And that's a request I'd like to make so that we could try to accommodate this, this, um, this item for, for council. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Bobby, have that?
Yes.
Thank you. Number two. Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to extend the lease agreement between Luzerne County and U.S. Representative Matt Cartwright in the Penn Place Building. Do we have a motion?
So move, Sheila.
Second. Second? Second by.
Mr. McInley, second.
Thank you. On the question? On the question? Sharon, roll call vote.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sevan?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Motion passes. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne County and Market Square Properties Development LLC for premises located at 33 West Wilkes Barre Boulevard, Wilkes Barre, Pennsylvania. Motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, second.
Second, Leanne.
Mr. McDermott, on the question. Before we get on to question, counsel, uh, I'd like you to bear with me for a couple, couple of minutes. I would like to, uh, have you to hold your questions, your thoughts, your concerns until we hear from the following three people. First, we're going to hear from Attorney Crocomal to tell us about the changes in the lease. Second, we're going to hear from Representative Mullery concerning the Whitehaven Library slash tourist center. And thirdly, we'll hear from Mr. Wampole, Executive Director of our tourist, um, area. So, once we hear from them, uh, then I'll turn it over to questions that we can have to them and any other concerns that you have. So then we'll be able to have a, a good idea of what's going on before we put this to a vote. Uh, Attorney Crocomal, could you tell us a little bit about the changes that were made in the, um, lease?
Yes, the change, uh, dealt with council's, uh, suggestion to, uh, perhaps expand, uh, the penalties if the building is not completed by December 15. So, uh, what, uh, we did was, uh, we reached out to Mr. Albert, uh, and we included the original, uh, uh, option of, uh, uh, not going forward with the lease. Uh, and we also added, uh, you know, that, uh, for every month, uh, that they would be late in completing the premises, uh, we would get two months free rent. So, uh, what we did was, um, we, we doubled the base rent. So if they're 30 days late in completing, uh, the renovations, uh, it would be, uh, equal to $5,400. Um, so that was the framework that we used, uh, to, to make these amendments, uh, in this lease.
But just to be clear, um, Mr. Chair, if I could, that was my motion to include those amendments as prescribed by Ms. Crocomal. Okay, just to clarify. With that, with that new language in it.
Okay.
Um, because I know that we had one from two weeks ago. That was the original motion. So, um, my motion is to have that in there as well.
Okay. Attorney Cro, uh, God, he took care of you. Uh, Representative Mullery, are you on? Is Representative Mullery on? Okay. Mr. Wampole?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, I'm here to answer any questions, uh, you know, that council may have as this comes up for the vote. But, you know, we're, we're looking forward, uh, you know, to, uh, you know, having the lease approved so we can look forward to moving into the, the train station once it's completed. Um, you know, we, we did attend the meeting down in, in Whitehaven, uh, toward the Whitehaven Library. Uh, again, beautiful town, nice facility. Uh, we are currently actively exploring putting a satellite visitor center, uh, at that Whitehaven Library based upon the, you know, this renewed interest with Whitehaven. So we're excited about that. But as far as locating the administrative offices, the bureau, and, you know, and that's the difference, you know, it's not just a visitor center, it's the bureau itself. I still strongly believe it needs to be centrally located, uh, so that we can service all of Luzerne County. So with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions.
And, and council, I also was at that tour, um, of the Whitehaven Library slash tourist center. Uh, impressive building, uh, really, uh, architecturally done quite well inside. Uh, and they have some more improvements to make, but more importantly, they have some really good, outstanding people down there. Um, uh, they work, there is no compensation to anyone there, and there is no money owed in that building whatsoever. Uh, and I, I'm really feeling strongly, as Ted pointed out, that we should utilize them as much as possible. A satellite center would be absolutely appropriate. Uh, and I think your building is only, i- is good as the people that you have going in it and, and utilizing it and running it. Whitehaven has everything going for it. Uh, they're certainly an up and coming community. And it was impressive just, just to be down there. Okay, council, any questions for?
I just, I just have some comments, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And, and again, I, I did not attend that meeting. I appreciate Ms. O'Kreaching out to us on behalf of, of the borough of Whitehaven. And I've been at that building many times. It's a great asset. I love Whitehaven. It's a great destination. If you've gone the DNL down there, when your bikes are kayaked, I've done all that, and it's, it's an asset. But, you know, if we look, we don't want to muddy the waters here. Remember, the original intent was to, to move this. This has been the goal for a long time, for many years here, if you've been serving on this council, like some of us have. And that train station is also an asset. It's a historical place that we, we really want to move the, the tourist, the visitor center there. That was, again, the goal. And if you look at, at the logic, we've got a lot of assets here in Luzerne County. We have Ricketts Glen in the northwestern corner of Luzerne County. That's, that's a gateway to Luzerne County. We could partner with the state and put something there. Aklees Minor Village is down there in the Hazlem, in South County, not just southeast, like where Whitehaven is. So I, I'm glad that we're looking long-term and looking at, at building up all our, our assets. But again, this is a great, um, headquarters for our tourism, um, our, our, our head of tourism, which is Wilkes Barre. This is where all the discussions happen. For all the folks that want to do business in Luzerne County regarding tourism, they come to Wilkes Barre. And I, I just think it's just very appropriate to have it there. And it is a good project. So I, I, I get the sense, I think the, the majority of support, the majority of members are going to support this. But, uh, again, I thank Mr. Mullery for bringing this up because I think it has helped Luzerne County get a better deal on the way. So thank you, Representative Mullery, for doing that. And, um, with that, this is my unequivocal support.
Thank you. Mr. Haas, anybody else?
No. And Sheila, I just wanted to say, I agree with, uh, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Harry. What I didn't like, and in terms of the vote, uh, there were comments made during the public's, the public, uh, meeting about not looking at Whitehaven because, uh, we have a, a political supporter in the other person that would enter into this lease agreement. And I don't think that's fair. I think that we aren't looking at that. We are looking at it truly as a, what is the best place to have the main bureau for visitors? And I think that is the correct, Wilkes Barre is the correct choice. But I think Mr. Wampole's statement that they're looking at Whitehaven as a satellite is very exciting. And I, I think it's a great idea. But I just didn't like the statement regarding political, uh, money, basically.
Thank you. Sheila, anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Perry?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, my, my concern with the station is always, as I, and I agree with Councilman Haas, that the promise was always that we were going to move into the station. That was always the promise from the day when Greg, uh, when, uh, Mr. Greco owned it and Redevelopment Authority took it over. I sat at many commissioner meetings, listening to the commissioners rant and rave about how we're going to make the station our gateway and we're going to be in a convention visitor bureau. I get all of that. As I sent council the, the list of newspaper articles about that station, the concern that I have, and I have no problems at all leasing that station when it's in a condition to be leased, I do have a problem with a document that we're going to approve today with a, a building that's actually fallen down on itself at this moment. The concern that I have is Mr. Albert had made promises when he bought that property, that he was going to refurbish it because it was a historical structure, and he got the RCAP money to do that. There was no strings attached to that RCPA, RCAP money that said that the county had to give him a lease agreement. There were no strings attached that said if the county didn't do it, he didn't have to restore it. He has yet to put a shovel in the ground in that building to fix that building up, other than to remove a couple of train cars and some other things, and in fact had volunteers come and clean it out. With all of that being said, my concern here is I would love to see us move into that train station. I have no problems with that at all. But I don't think the council should be responsible to sign a lease without that building being done first, or at least started. The problem that I'm having here is a lot of things can happen between now and December. And I understand we put the clause in there that, you know, if it's not done on time, it's $180 a day, and, and all of that stuff is great and wonderful, and we give them a six-month extension if it's not done. That's not the issue here. The issue is we want the station restored. And that's the issue. Is that building currently structurally safe or structurally sound in order to inhabit a rehabilitation at this point? We don't know that at this point. But we have, we're going to assign a lease agreement to a person with absolutely nothing. We're going to promise him a lease agreement, but he hasn't fulfilled a promise to start any restoration of that building since he got any money from the county and from the state. I just think it's disingenuous for us to do that to the taxpayers. I don't think one person on this council would go out to rent an apartment in a condition that that station is in and sign a lease agreement with the landlord and say, hey, if you fix this place up in six months, I'll move into it. I don't think there's one person on this council that would do that. And I wouldn't do it. If the building was ready to go, and they said in six months you could move in here, I would be happy to sign the, the lease agreement. I am, I, I think we should postpone this vote until December the 14th, at our council meeting on December the 14th. If that building is in fact ready on December the 14th, then we will, I will have absolutely no problem approving a lease for that structure. But I am not in favor of approving a lease on a structure that has had absolutely no renovation done to it to date. The man's been sitting on a million and a half dollars so far of state funding to restore a historical structure and hasn't done a thing to it. I think it's disingenuous for us to even get this lease agreement from the administration at this point. We should have waited, they should have waited until that building was at least ready to go before we got this lease agreement. I don't think there's one person on this council that will not vote to go into that train station if it's renovated. I think that was the promise that was made when that train station was originally put in the county's hands at six and a half million. Then this guy picks it up for a million and a half with a promise, and you all saw the articles that I sent to you, he promised he was going to restore that building. That's nothing to say about whether we're going to lease it or not at that point. So I, my problem with the lease agreement is not that I don't want to lease the, the train station. That is not the case. I think the train station is a great place. I would love to be there. But I think Mr. Albert needs to show us some kind of, of initiative that says he's actually going to do the work on the structure prior to us signing a document with him that says we're going to move in there regardless of whether he's going to do anything on it yet or not. And I think that's really the, the whole argument for me on this structure. I appreciate, I think we should sign a one-year lease with the man, and then when we get in there, if, if we ever do get in there, just do a one-year lease. And then when we do get in there, we can sign multiple leases after that. But for us to sign a five-year lease, and I still need to get clarification as how does that number, uh, it says in the financing, it's 1543 a square foot for 20, or 2,100 square feet. If you do the math on 2,100 square feet times 1543, it doesn't come out to $2,700. It comes out to $3,200. So how is that, how is that number incorrect? And, and not only that, but there's also a $2 a square foot maintenance fee for every square foot that we have in there as well. So, so we're really not getting the property for 2,700 a month. We're getting it for 2,700 plus 480.
Anyone else?
This is Leanne. I don't know, somebody else speaking in there?
Is that you, Steve?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Steve.
The other, the other thing is that I was looking at the lease terms where it has the, the two renewals. And I would like to have language inserted into that contract that, uh, basically states that future county council members should vote on those renewals. I mean, it, it doesn't assume any of that in, in the language. It just said there's, there's an option, you know, for two, two additional three-year renewals. You know, is that going to be county management that executes that, or is that the future county council? I don't think, you know, we can bind, uh, the future councils, um, at this point in time.
Attorney Crocomal? What do you, what do you think about that?
That's up to council whether they want to amend it, to have, uh, council vote on, uh, renewals.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Was that done in the past? Is that something we should consider?
No, we have not done that in the past, but I think Ms. Crocomal is very correct on that. Uh, but I don't think they've become renewals at that point. They really, actually, I think in my eyes, become, uh, new agreements. As it would be different, uh, voting situation and, you know, there could be different terms at that point. But that's, I'm not a lawyer.
Mr. Perry?
Go ahead.
It's Linda Houck. Um, well, there'll be two new county councils in the initial term of the lease anyway, um, in the first five years. Um, I don't think that that's really practical, um, to say that every county council has to vote on that lease. Um, so you're going to see two new ones, uh, in the course of the first five years anyway. Um, and the, if the lease is structured with two renewals, uh, maybe that's what you want to amend. You want to just take the renewals out. But I don't think you can base it on saying that you want, uh, the new councils to vote on it because they're already going to miss, uh, miss the, the first term. You know, the first term will cover two new councils anyway.
And, and just, uh, and just for a point of information, you know, with the renewals, that goes into the pricing, uh, when you're negotiating, uh, with a vendor. Uh, the longer, uh, that you have a contract or a lease, you get, you get better pricing.
Mr. Perry? Go ahead.
I don't know how much people have done in the past personally with leases, et cetera. But this is not an unusual, uh, procedure or not an unusual proposal. Uh, this is something that's been done many, many times. Uh, this is something that, uh, you know, the developer has then to use as a tool as he goes forward with his financing and other things that become involved in these kinds of, uh, real estate situations. I believe that the terms and things that are offered here are very much in line with what you would see on the market anywhere in the local area. Uh, you know, I think to tie the hands of the developer, you're basically saying, hey, we don't believe in you, and we don't, we, you know, we don't want to deal with you. At this point in time, I believe the proper procedure would be to vote on the, the lease as presented. Uh, I strongly support the lease- I strongly support the lease with the terms that are presented. I think the terms that are added, it's particularly, uh, Mr. Haas's, uh, statements, were very positive for the county. And I think at this point, it should be something that we bring their vote and see what the majority of council feels at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Perry, just to be clear, this is Linda again. Uh, just to be clear, the actual, the lease would not actually start until we occupy the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if there's a delay, there is no, uh, Mr. Albert is not getting any, any funds from the county for rental. Um, he won't get anything from us until he actually completes the work on the building and makes it, um, uh, fit for occupation, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and this, this is Leanne McDermott. Just reading through the R A C P, the, the grant, um, he has to, the developer has to follow the plan with submitting, uh, where he's getting his money from. If it's going to be from loans or internal operating funds, um, you know, he's not getting this money unless he follows the steps according to that R A C P. I don't believe that he has any of that money in hand at this point. It has to be, uh, in, in the process, and he does have to stay on a timeline as well. If the timeline is not followed, then he has to give, um, uh, you know, he has to get information to the state on that. So he does have to follow that, and it all comes down to, if it's not prepared by December, then, you know, then we make a decision at that point, or, or again, he doesn't get his money.
Okay, Steve, any other, any other concerns, questions?
Call for vote.
Oh, okay.
No, there's not enough. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Um, no, he did get, he did get his R C A P money, uh, so far. He did get his share because he put his half up. Uh, so it's, he does have his money to start the project already. Um, I, I, I just don't, I just don't think this is appropriate to approve a lease until he's got the building squared away, or at least started something. We're talking about promises made, promises kept.
Can we call the question then?
Not, not while I'm having a discussion, we can't. When I'm finished my discussion, we can. I have the floor, thank you very much.
You've already expressed.
I have the floor, thank you very much.
You've already said it three times.
All right, Walter, want to wrap it up? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll wrap it up. I want to make a motion to postpone this lease until December fourteenth.
Roll call.
Roll call vote. Sharon?
Is that Mr. Urban that was the second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houck?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Two yes and I no.
Okay, Sharon, roll call vote.
Mr. Perry, can I get an answer to my question? What's the lease cost going to be? It says in the lease agreement that it's fifteen thirty-five a square foot, times twenty-one square foot. What is the cost of the lease? Is it, is it twenty-seven hundred, or is it thirty-four hundred a month? Could somebody please clarify that before we approve this lease?
Attorney Crockerwell?
Mr. Chair, uh, I mean, I, I can't answer that. But, uh, again, this is another situation where we have, we have put a lot of preparation into coming and being able to be present at the meeting today, uh, and, and be able to, to provide legal advice, uh, to any questions that would come up. And to have, at the time of the meeting, to have questions that, that make it appear as if something is trying to get rushed through, when in fact, this has been on work, these things have been on work sessions. These things have been released by the chair weeks in advance. Uh, these questions could have been submitted to the administration, to the office of law, outside of, of a public meeting, to give us an opportunity to provide a, a detailed legal answer. Um, and instead, we, it's like, uh, ambush at the time of a hearing, or at the time of the meeting, where now, we're put on the spot, we're made at times to appear to be, uh, unprepared, when in actuality, and Mr. Perry, you know this, you haven't been chair, uh, for all, other than the past two weeks, how many hours go in of preparation, and how many attorneys from our office are involved in preparing for these meetings? And instead, we show up, and we're, we have to deal with, with situations like this now, where there's all kind of life-changing, important questions that have to be dealt with right at this moment, when these all could have been dealt with before we're at a public meeting, with eleven council members, with members of the administration, and with members of the public, sitting on line, waiting for hours to get through five agenda items. So I don't have the answer to that number. If Mr. Griffith, Councilman Griffith, had that question, that could have been presented before we came to the public meeting. Ramilda, do you have an answer to that question?
Uh, I'm going to, uh, reach out to, uh, Ted Wampel to discuss, uh, the issues that were raised, including the amount.
Yeah, so, uh, it's, it's fifteen forty-three per square foot. And if you multiply it out, it comes out to thirty-two thousand, four hundred and three dollars for the year, divided by twelve months, comes out to twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. So, that's accurate.
That is actually on the lease.
Yeah, it is. Okay. So we have a motion, call a question in a second, right?
Yep. Let's vote.
Sharon, roll call.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
I'm sorry, what was that? Mr. Urban?
No.
No? Okay. Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Nine yes, two no.
Motion carries. Number four, agenda item of county council, motion to adopt a resolution adopting appointee member to Loseran County Flood Protection Authority. Motion to open nominations for the Flood Protection Authority.
So moved.
Second.
That would be, that would be Mr. Urban and second?
Sheila, Ms. Saden.
Save a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, nominations are now open.
Make motion, nomination. I'd like to nominate John Mayday.
Okay, Sheila, John Mayday. Your second?
Yeah, second, one.
Anybody else?
Second.
Mr. O'Brien?
Is that you, uh, Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Okay. And your second?
Second, Linda.
Motion to close nominations, Kendra.
Who's that second?
Mr. McGinley.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppositions? Any abstentions? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Please indicate in your vote whether you want to nominate John Hayday, Mr. Hayday, or Mr. O'Brien. Sharon?
Mr. Perry, if I may?
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, this council really missed an opportunity, last time there was a vacancy on this board, to reappoint Mr. Kevin O'Brien. He has served for, for a long time on the Flood Protection Authority. He, he did that for his trade. He is, he's indispensable. This is not, nothing contrary to Mr. Mr. Mayday, who I, I, I know him personally and value him very much. But we've got to understand, we are concerned with the security in case of a flood event for Loseran County, for the Wyoming Valley, and you can't go wrong, Mr. O'Brien. So I encourage the members to please give him your support, because he is certainly the most qualified person for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. Anybody else? Okay, please indicate, uh, your vote, who you are supporting. Sharon?
Ms. Radell?
Mr. Hayday.
Ms. Sedman?
Mr. Mayday.
Mr. Schnee?
Mr. Mayday.
Mr. Urban?
O'Brien.
Mr. Vog?
Mayday.
Mr. Griffith?
O'Brien.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. O'Brien.
Ms. Houck?
O'Brien.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Mayday.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Mayday.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. May.
I have seven for Mr. Mayday, and four for Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt a resolution appointing John Mayday to the Loseran County Flood Protection Authority.
So moved, Kendra?
Second.
Sheila.
Sheila, roll call, Sharon?
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, based on experience, no.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Nine yes, two no.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, motion to adopt the resolution to reduce ten percent penalty fee for Loseran County two thousand twenty-one real estate property taxes. The motion, please.
I'll move, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, your second?
Second, Linda.
Second, Ms. Houck. On to question.
Yes, Sheila.
Go ahead.
I wanted to know, um, is, um, is budget and finance on?
I am.
Oh, there you are, Brian, okay. Let me ask you something. I think I recall this, um, in terms of how many people have already paid their taxes, it was, I thought, in the high eighties percent? And that the loss of this, this, uh, ten percent penalty would equal a million, about a million dollars to the county.
So I'm going to say to your point, the discount plus the face, so we're not through the face yet, which would be the next two months, but the discount plus the face would be about that percentage. And once that's done, there's usually about a ten million dollar, uh, balance left, and ten percent of ten million would be a million dollars. Uh, just to give council some perspective as of today, actually as of yesterday, because it was before things were posted today, uh, last year at this point, we received forty-three point six million. This year, at this point, we see fifty-three point three million. So as some of the public and council have said in the prior meetings and today, I by no means think the pandemic's over, but with the emergency rental and some of the other grants that are available, more people are paying than they did at this time last year. Uh, when we put the budget together, we use ninety-two percent flat. So we say we're going to collect ninety-two percent at face. We don't say we're going to collect so much at, uh, two percent discount, or so much at penalty. It's just budgeted at ninety-two percent.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is, this is Leanne. Um, okay, so Mr. Griffith brought this up, correct?
It is correct.
Yes, introduced it. So I want to know why, why, Mr. Griffith, why aren't you following the rules? Like, shouldn't this go through a committee first, and then be presented to council, or recommended to council?
I don't know, is that written somewhere?
Well, everything that, you know, I'm doing with the Real Estate Committee, or the, the Real Estate Committee is doing, we try to put it through the Real Estate Committee first, and then, you know, recommend it to council.
What committee would this go through? What committee would this go through?
Probably codes, uh, administrative code.
Why?
Budget, finance, and audit.
There you go. And Walter, how many constituents did you, you know, talk to that feel that it's really necessary? I'm not saying that it's not. Just wondering if you were able to come up with any numbers of people, how many people? You know, when you're talking about, do you have like written information related to the cash flow? At least Mr. Swet's provided that. But do you have anything that you accumulated on your own?
No, I just think ten percent penalty is punitive. I think anybody who can pay their taxes by a certain period of time should not be levying a penalty. I think what we should do is give them the opportunity to pay their taxes, because the penalty is they're going to lose their house. I think ten percent penalty is punitive, regardless of whether there's a COVID outbreak, or whether there's this pandemic or not. I think if we want people to pay their taxes in advance, we need to give them a discount. We don't need to be punitive on taxes. Is punitive enough in this county? So if they're going to pay a face, at the end of December thirty-first, if you haven't paid your taxes, you're going to get a penalty, because elite revenue is going to tack on their fee, and everybody else is going to tack on their fee, and you risk losing your house. That's more than enough penalty for anybody in this county to have to deal with, rather than have a ten percent extra penalty put on them, because they can't make the penalty, the payment by June. That's, that's the point. I don't have to talk to anybody to decide that I think that reducing the penalty from ten percent to one is a good idea, because I think people in this county are hurting, trying to pay their taxes to start with.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Aaron.
You know, Walter, I think it's a great motion. I'm going to support it. And the thing is, you know, we, when you look at delinquent taxes, a lot of the penalties are actually paid by corporations who, um, in many cases purposely don't pay their taxes. So it's going to hurt us in that, because some people do avoid, some entities do avoid paying their taxes. However, that being said, many homeowners are hurt by this. So I, I think it's a good idea. And if we're going to follow the logic that we need to put it through committee, where was the tax collector issue? That wasn't put forth to any committee, and that was ran through. And it was negotiated by city members of council. Terrible, terrible process. So I, 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 I find that disingenuous, that we're going to put this and pick and choose what we're going to send through committee. Support a hundred percent, good idea, but it, again, it is going to end up costing us some, because some entities purposely don't pay their taxes on time.
Most didn't.
And Mr. Haas? Uh, Walter, my concern with this is, uh, is cash flow. Um, normally, if somebody has a bill to pay, and there is no, six months, due six months later, and there is no penalty to pay that, what, why should they pay it? They'll pay it December thirty-first. You know, and, and so what if there is thousands of people decide, hey, I'm going to save this. I, I, I might need it for something else. I'll just push it down the line, and all, they'll all pay at the end. I'm not saying all of them, that's a bad term, but most of the people are going to do that. What happens to our cash flow? How do we pay our bills? Do we have to take out an extra loan to pay our bills? What's that going to cause to the county? That's my concern. I, I don't know if we have any answers to that, because we don't have numbers to support that. But
I have some stuff, Mr. Perry.
Human nature is going to tell you, people are not going to do that. They'll pay it December thirty-first. Well, how does that, how does that?
Mr. Perry, if I could address your concern?
Yeah.
Uh, if you are not paying your taxes until June the sixteenth, and you go into penalty, I think the last thing you're going to worry about is paying your taxes until December thirty-first, because you're already in penalty. So your ten percent is already going to be levied. It's never going to go away from June to December. So I think you're going to have that cash flow problem regardless of your issue. So if I'm in penalty, and I'm not paying my taxes until June fifteenth, June sixteenth I go into penalty. If I didn't make my taxes, I'm going to keep my money in the bank until December thirty-first. That's when I'm going to pay them, because it doesn't benefit me to pay. That's when I'm gonna pay them because it doesn't benefit me to pay them any earlier. So what's the point? Why would I wanna pay them earlier? If I'm already in penalty, I'm not gonna rush to make my tax payment.
Mr. Perry, can I comment?
Go ahead.
So as I said before, just using what we have today. So we already received 53.3 million, which is 46% of budget. We normally receive close to 90% of budget. So we're gonna have another $50 million that this county will get by June 15, June 16. If that penalty goes from 10 to 1%, county cannot negotiate another tran. County can't negotiate with every vendor to change payment terms. And the county may need to do something with employment like we had to for the COVID. I don't have exact numbers because we don't know how many people aren't gonna pay or would be incentivized to pay later because of reduction in the fee. As I said before, it's not budgeted. We budgeted a flat amount, but there obviously is a consequence. So that's all, that's all the information I have. It's council's vote, but there is an economic impact. And I just wanna make sure council has the information.
Question?
I could, into.
Who's, was, was that you, Sheila?
Yeah, but Steve has a, doesn't Steve have a statement, and I have already talked?
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, I mean, I, I think it's not just homeowners too. I mean, I think a lot of people tend to forget they're small business that exists within the county as well. And I know quite a few business people that are struggling this year, you know, and, and they're, you know, quite honestly getting PUA benefits as well, you know, like gig worker benefits. They're also getting small, you know, small business grants, things like that. I mean, it's not just the homeowner that, that we're talking about during this COVID pandemic. You know, and now the county is supposed to get an infusion of many millions of dollars. I mean, can any of that be reprogrammed for any of the expenses that we currently have for, for this fiscal year? I mean, there's, there's things that are still unanswered, but quite honestly, when, when you, when you go out and talk to different business owners as well, I mean, they're struggling. I mean, I worked at, worked at a place that just recently closed up about a week and a half, two weeks ago. And, and quite honestly, I took on another job on weekends, and I talked to the owner actually last night. And he said, you know, most people are tend to forget that, you know, businesses are struggling no matter how big or small they are. And I don't think council sometimes understands the, the actual problem out in the community. And so any break that we can give anybody, I think matters. You know, I mean, government never seems to shut down. Government never seems to tighten its belt. But I think this year we, we need to, and, and I think we owe it to the taxpayers and our residents to give a little bit back and our business owners that are within this county. You know, a lot of these benefits, yeah, they're going on until September, till, you know, later on third quarter this year. However, obviously after that, we don't know what's going to happen in the fourth quarter of this year. So those are things to think about. Like I said, I've spoken to people out in the public, business owners are hurting just as much as, as the residents. And they, they are residents of this county as well. I mean, they own property in this county. And when, when you're talking like, some businesses have a million dollars typical in revenue a year, and they're down 20% within the last year, that's a huge hit for these people. And, and so I think we have to be cognizant that residents aren't just, you know, the average person that owns a home. It's also people that own small businesses and big businesses around here.
Thanks, Steve. Sheila, you got something else?
Um, I, I understand what Steve's saying and what Walter's saying. But at the same time, with that kind of loss in revenue that Brian just talked about, easily what could happen is ultimately the taxpayer will pay because we'll have to raise taxes. I mean, we're going to lose significant money. So we're going, we'd eventually have to raise taxes, and we've been very fortunate for the last couple of years with not raising taxes. So I have concerns there for the, for the businessman and for the individual homeowner about that. It's just a different, a different, it's all in the pocket. It's just who, who's, what time it is, and, and if they don't pay, if we give them a break here, then are we gonna not be able to give them a break next year during tax, when we have to decide what taxes are available?
Thank you. Thank you, Sheila. Anybody else?
Mr. Perry?
Yes, I'd like to comment. I'll not take anybody else's spot.
Sure, Jim.
I think Sheila is exactly right. That's why this is a budget item. Because our budget is based on our taxation, as we all know. That's our major source of revenue for the county. So this is an item that really should be taken up at that time. It does not really belong here at this time. As far as helping small businesses and nonprofits, et cetera. The county made a very strong effort back a few months ago to provide county grants to a lot of those different entities that were mentioned. And I applaud our county for doing that because many other counties decided to keep the money and pay their own expenses and not help their community businesses or residents, et cetera. You know, and very strongly, you know, you're talking about a million dollars. That's approximately a 1% increase in, in taxes. So if you give up a million dollars in revenue, you're looking for a 1% increase in taxes. That's what you're starting with. And I hope people recognize the fact that no one wants to do that. No one wants to really penalize the people who are making their efforts to pay on time or pay ahead of time to get a small discount. So I think at this point in time, this is not a motion that should be passed. It's a motion should be, should fail, and we should move on. And during budget season, that's the time to discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McInley. Anybody else?
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Griffith?
How much, how much money do we have in our reserve fund? Over $3 million, I think, Mr. Swetz?
Mr. Griffith, yeah, we moved, I think a little bit less than that with the ordinances the council did. You know, we put together, the council approved.
Okay. So we, we have almost $3 million in our savings account. That's our savings account. If we're short a million dollars at the end of the year, we could transfer it out of our savings account. It's the taxpayers' money. We're holding their money. Let's use their money to give them a break. That's what that money's for. It's not for us to sit there and go, well, geez, there, we got $3 million in our savings account. I know people in this county that don't have 10 cents in the savings account. I mean, we all probably know people that don't have a savings account. Yet we're, we're not willing to give them a break on their taxes by taking that 10% penalty away? This is a penalty. It's not like we're reducing their taxes. We're taking a penalty away. We can give a three quarters of a million dollar lawsuit away for, for people that did something wrong in this county, but we can't give these people a break on their taxes? We can give LERTAs out to big corporations, but we can't give people a break on their taxes? I mean, I think our, our priorities are in the wrong place here. I understand, I understand there's a possibility that if we give a, a 10% break, as everybody's saying that there may be a tax increase, I don't think that's a possibility. We have $3 million in the bank sitting, sitting in the bank that we could use to, to fill that up. We got $111 million from the federal government, from the federal government for infrastructure and things like that. Some of that money might, might possibly, 111 million. That's almost 75% of our annual budget. That, that was given to us by the federal government through the last stimulus. And, and we're sitting on that money, and we're, we're worried about taking away a penalty on the people of this county so they can actually survive without paying extra? I think that's just, that's really sad. I think the people of this county deserve better than that.
Mr. Perry, can I just add one thing?
Yes, Brian, go ahead.
Mr. Griffith and Mr. Urban are correct with the 115 million, but we haven't received a dime yet. And we, even though myself and the team has been on four or five webinars, we have no definitive views on what we can use that on. So we may be able to use it on something, we may not. I don't wanna count on backfilling this on next year's budget. So I understand what Mr. Griffith's saying. I just wanted to give the information that, that we had and let council know. But yes, we're gonna have 115 million. Exactly what it could be used on, nobody knows yet. And when it's not here yet, you'll get an email from me as soon as we get it.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Schnee.
Where are we, what we did last year when we extended the face value 60 days? And what was, what was the collection rate last year?
So, so Mr. Schnee's question, last year when we did that, at the end of face, we were at closer to 94% to 92%. So there were more people that paid a face. Face doesn't end, as you could see in Mr. Griffith's submittal, until June. You know, there's some time, our issue last time was it was late to communicate with the municipalities. Just like with the plan earlier tonight, there is some communication if municipalities are in or out. So I wouldn't suggest waiting till the 16th. But that was something that we did to extend the face, and it, it did not really materially impact us. It had some impact, but obviously we had some other sources of money. So that's probably a better idea than lowering the penalty, but I'll leave that to council.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Bob.
Is that in the hands of the state now, or is that still in the hands of us by extend, extending that face value period?
I believe it's, it's in the state, but Attorney Crocomal, you wanna clarify that?
It's still in the state. Actually, I didn't look for an update or get an update yet, but the last, that I checked last week, it was still with the state. They have to prove that. It's still in the meeting.
Thank you. Anything else, Bob?
Yes, I, I would just caution. I have the same concerns as you do, Mr. Perry. As I look around the county, I, I think the only city that came up with something was the seat of Wilkes-Barre by extending it to 30 days. I mean, last year we extended it 60 days. There has been no other municipality that has come forward with extending their because I, I think they have the same concerns about paying their employees and paying their vendors. I, I think Walter's idea, I know a lot of people are struggling, could be looked at later, could be adjusted later. Going from 10 to 1%, like you said, everybody's gonna be paying December 31st. I think something could be negotiated later on, once we see what kind of money is coming in, what percent of money is coming in, and also extending maybe the face value from 60 to 90 days.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else?
Yeah, I wanna jump in real quick. As far as the 60 to 90 days, I mean, wouldn't the state law as it exists right now prevent us from, from changing that face value extension? And that would be to the attorneys.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Like, right now, I mean, we, I don't think the county under existing law could change the face value terms at this point, correct?
Correct.
That has to be adjusted under state law. So, so that option would not be on the table at this point, Mr. Schnee, unless the state passes it.
I understand that, Mr. Urban. And it, it is too early to negotiate a 10% to 1% yet. I'd like to see what they're coming, they're coming up with first, and then
Yeah, unless somebody
then go from there.
That, that's if the state passes it. We don't know if they're gonna do anything.
And I don't think it's too early because we gotta give 30 days notice to the tax collectors.
Right, we're in April, Mr. Griffith.
Right. And the penalty period starts on June 15th.
Does anybody know when, when the state's gonna go forward?
I haven't heard anything, Mr. Schnee. I, I just knew that it was down there. I don't know where it's at.
Anyone else? Call the question. Okay. Roll call, full, Sharon?
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huzz?
Yes.
Ms. Elk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Motion does not pass. Before we get to public comment, I have an email.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, before we go further, if the state doesn't come through, I would look to extend the face value or later on reduce that 10% a little bit lower than what it was. And I understand the timeframe. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
But Mr. Chair, if I could as well, because we do the old school tax collecting way, that makes it almost impossible to do. We ran into this discussion last year. If we had one unified tax collection, we could pull something like that off. This basically was a, a permanent no tonight. Everybody voted for this. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Sharon. Before we go to public comment, I have an email that was sent to council meeting, public comments from Mindy Stevens. The question is, where would I find a listing of county-owned property for sale? Attorney Crocomal, you wanna take care of that?
We do have a list. I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman McDermott, that you did send that list out to her, but we do have, we do have a list that we can provide to inquiries. So she received the list of available properties.
Yes, I sent that as well as the links for the judicial sale, upset sale. So she did receive all that.
Thank you. Okay, public comment on non-agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Rabo speaking.
Hey, Mark. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the comprehensive plan, I did not know that there would be exact language needed. As I said at the last council meeting, that there were details left out. And I was hoping that planning and zoning would reach out to me in some way, shape, or form. We could have discussed all this with the Office of Law, and you guys could have voted on it tonight. But be that as it may, as far as what Mr. Jones and Councilman Urban said about Lackawanna County and Councilwoman Simon said about Lackawanna County, I would refer you to what the Lehigh River in terms of where it spans to. According to the map here, it spans approximately 15 miles southeast of Scranton. It flows initially southwest through southern Lackawanna County, through the Francis E. Walter Reservoir near Whitehaven, and then it turns south following a zigzag whitewater course through Lehigh Gorge State Park to Jim Thorpe. Okay? And then southeast past Lehigh. So therefore, it does impact on both Lackawanna and Luzerne Counties. Also, being a former member of the Hazleton City Water Authority Board of Directors, we, I could tell you this, that the Water Authority, the City Water Authority does get water from the Lehigh River in the amount of, well, since when I first left, when I left the City Water Authority, 3 million gallons per day. So that's what the City Water Authority draws from the Lehigh River. So that is a major detail that has been left out. And I said at the last council meeting pertaining to the county comprehensive plan that the Hazleton City Water Authority, as well as other entities in the southern end of Luzerne County that deals with the water issues for the residents of Hazel Township and Bear Creek Township, should have been consulted. So I would like to leave, leave it on that. And also, Mr. Perry, I did attend the, the LERTA meeting in Hazel Township with respect to the item on the work session agenda. And I, I think I'll leave it to the developer to give you the summation because it was very informative last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabo. Thank you, Mr. Rabo. Anyone else? From the public on non-agenda items? Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
I, I'm really disappointed in, in the, in the undertakings of this county council. I, I have to be ashamed to see that they would step on the people's neck for a 10% penalty. And why I say that, I know I heard Sheila, I heard Bo, I heard, uh, Mr. Perry, I heard Mr. McGinley. Don't you people have any concern for the taxpayers? If you have no money to pay any bills and you have no money to buy food, what's the next thing you're going to turn to? Let's put you, Mr. McGinley, in these people's positions that you don't have a dime in your pocket. You're looking for help for people. You're living on the stimulus money and that's feeding your family and that is helping you pay your rent and helping you pay your bills. So let's put you in that situation. Wouldn't you look for help? Wouldn't you ask the county council, look, let's see if we can't help the people in the county? Let's not see if we can't put the, your knee on their neck and hurt the people. Sheila, I thought you were a very compassionate person. I'm really, 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 I, I can't see how you could have compassion for people if you say, oh, well, I think this will hurt the people. You don't understand what's hurting the people right now. My gosh, look at the people around you. Talk to the public. Let's get out and get to the public. Let's not just sit behind a telephone and say, we're having a county council meeting and how many people attend? How many people come to the courthouse and attend? Let's get out because this is a voting year, people. You're voting down these things and you're going to get voted out of office. And by all that means and wholly, I will bring this to the radio station and I will tell the people in Luzerne County not to vote for you. I'm sorry I have to be this way and abrupt in, in my manners. I'm a very mannerable person and I'm not like some of these people to call up and, and curse at people. I try to keep my patience. I've kept my patience very long and hard about the rainwater and there's still no answer. So when you go to have people vote for you, I'm going to tell them you voted against it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manta. Anyone else to the public? Anyone else in the public? Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Perry, excuse me. Uh, this is Tim McGinley.
Yes, Tim.
You know, I take great offense at Mr. Manta's accusations. I don't know if he knows much about my family and background. We grew up, my father died when I was in fifth grade. There was five siblings in the family. My mother racist and did, I think, a tremendous job under those conditions. As far as struggling with finances, we were so poor, we couldn't afford a bicycle among four or five of us and our siblings. We had to pedal papers and the money that came from the paper companies for pedaling papers, at that time there was two papers, one in the morning, one in the evening, that bought bread and milk for our family. And you know what? We went out and worked and we paid our taxes and we paid them our time. And we did everything to be a good community citizen. We didn't ask for anything. We knew it was our responsibility to do that. And we did it as a family. And I sit here tonight listening to Mr. Manta criticize me, not knowing, not knowing what my family went through. And I think it's totally irresponsible for him to even get asked that kind of question or mention my name personally. I take great offense. I'm sorry, uh, for getting loud. I should not, I, I apologize, but when you take accusations like that, I think that's beyond being a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley.
And I will say something about my name being mentioned, Mr. Perry, by Mr. Manta, who I know is a very mannerable person and I think he is a good person. I also think my vote, Mr. Manta, knowing that I'm running, knowing that there's a vote coming up in November and I'm going to be on the ballot, I'm taking a risk. I wouldn't take that risk unless I thought my actions were correct here. I feel that the opportunity for the, for the, uh, county to lose this money is significant. And I have to say that I think when you vote something that might be very, look as it's very favorable in the here and now, right at this moment for the taxpayer, not looking ahead to what they might have to deal with next December, well, I think that makes you very careful about your vote and, and actually well thought out. It has to be well thought out because you're risking your public service.
Thank you.
Chris, I would love to say something too.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so, uh, where should I start? So when I first ran, it was on fiscal responsibility and this is one of the most fiscally irresponsible resolutions that we've seen. Um, it's funny that he says we don't care about the taxpayer. I'm out every night caring for taxpayers. You know, it's easy to come in here and vote no and do nothing else. Um, this was to me, this is a gotcha politics resolution. He wanted, like someone wanted this exact moment to happen. If we voted no, we don't like the taxpayers. If we vote yes, we got to shrink the budget, we got to fire people, we got to cut services. This is, this is one of, one of the easier votes I've made. It's not about caring for the taxpayers, it's about being fiscally responsible and that's our jobs. We have to make hard decisions, but this honestly wasn't one.
Thank you, Mr. Vog. Anybody else? Before we adjourn?
Yeah, Mr. Perry. I just want to say a couple. You know, the, the fiscal responsible thing for, for employees to do too is to also protect liability within the county. I mean, it, obviously over the course of the last year and a half almost, we've paid out an, an incessant amount of, of lawsuits within this county, which don't protect the taxpayer at all because of some screw up at the county. You know, and, and we're talking in tunes of collaboratively over a million dollars or more. And, and some of these lawsuits, I mean, yeah, it's just the $50,000 deductible here, another $50,000 deductible there. You know, we're talking like $3 million in reserve or almost 3 million in reserve at this point in time. To simply reduce, you know, that down by about a million to offset that $1 million expense or proposed $1 million expenses is, actually I think, you know, it's all taxpayers' money at the end of the day. It's collectively, every resident in this county and business owner that owns property in this county pays into the system and they do deserve a break. I mean, government is not, should, should not be in the business of taking people's houses and livelihoods away. We are supposed to protect each other and we collectively are supposed to be one big happy family in Luzerne County that protects our neighbors, that loves our neighbors and are compassionate toward them. But we don't see that. Some of us on council do not see that from the majority of council. You know, we need to tighten our belts within the county. We need to hold people responsible for doing a bad job when they do a bad job and praise them when they're doing a good job. And, and quite honestly, being on council, I mean, we see the money going out the door all the time in lawsuits and litigation and, and some of that money could be utilized in a better manner, going back to the taxpayer if we had management that protected us, you know, and, and had, hold these people responsible in those jobs that commit the liability or the libelous action when, when we have a problem. You know, just recently we had another suicide at the jail. You know, I mean, those things like that create the black eyes within the county, but who are we holding responsible when there's a problem? I mean, obviously we haven't really discussed some of these issues lately and I think we need to, you know, start holding people's feet to the fire because every time there's a $750,000 lawsuit at taxpayers' expense, we, we're telling people to go suck it up and pay some more into the system, but we don't hold management responsible at all. And I think we need to do our job as council to hold management's feet to the fire and those people that are in the legal environment to make sure that they're putting all the policies and procedures or at least following them to protect the taxpayer, to protect us as the people that are paying into this system. You know, we're, we're constantly asking people for more and more money, but these people, I mean, the people that I talk to just don't have it anymore. You know, I mean, they're relying on, on stimulus and government funding at this point to just live and, and, you know, if people are forecasting the future, I think we're, we're setting up, you know, setting them up for things in the future. And quite honestly, like I said, you need to start looking at the business owners too because they do pay a lot of the people's bills around here and if they're not making money, it's just going to be a domino effect in the near future that, that, uh, you know, a whole house of cards are going to fall. And, and I, I give it a year or two before we really see the fallout from the past year and a half to two years.
Anybody, anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn. Second. Who was that second?
Who was the first?
Me, my, Tim McGinley. Yeah. Who was the second?
Kendra.
Kendra. Thank you, Kendra. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions unheard? We are adjourned. 10 minutes, I guess, I'll give you to, let's, let's go to 8:15. How does that sound? 8:15.
Great.